Good evening, everybody. I want to welcome everybody to the September 22nd, 2020 Cobb County Board of Commissioners regular meeting. And tonight, we're really blessed to have Pastor Malcolm Lewis from the Beacon of Light Christian Church to lead us in our invocation, followed by Deputy Brent Floyd to lead us in the pleasure of leading us. So those that it will enable, please stand.
May we all bow our heads, please. O wise, kind and loving God, we come on behalf of those that have gathered here today. We thank you for your grace, your many abundant blessings tonight. We thank you tonight, God, for just your love in the hour that we're in. We thank you, God, for the overwhelming peace in an hour of so much uncertainty. Thank you tonight, God, for being used as vessels here tonight. This commission board has been trusted and stewards for Cobb County. And so, God, we thank you for each one of them. We thank you for those that have come tonight, God, to be a part of the business of Cobb County. And so, tonight, God, we pray for all county officials tonight, those that are leaders, every mayor tonight, every department head. We pray tonight, God, for our first responders. We pray tonight, God, especially for our commission board tonight. We pray for every member tonight. We pray tonight, God, that you will give them wisdom tonight, God, to decide on the affairs of the people of this county, God, as you would decide. We pray that you will give them courage tonight, God, to stand and make decisions based on your word. Most importantly, tonight, God, give them a posture of humility to prioritize their agenda according to your will, which is the best interests of the people of this county, every business owner, oh, God. And so, God, tonight, we pray that they will be able to transact business for Cobb County in a spirit of unity and agreement. And so, tonight, God, we just want to say thank you again, as we, oh, God, ask that you add a special blessing on the agenda tonight. Every point of the agenda, God, we right now believe that is blessed, and we thank you tonight, God. So, God, we thank you. We praise you, is in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
If you would, do you want me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which it stands: One Nation, Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Sheriff. Deputy. Okay, we have four presentations tonight. The first will be by Commissioner Rott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ruth and Todd, will you come up, please? This is Ruth and Todd DeFeo.
If I take it off, if I leave it on, you won't understand what I'm saying.
If you're six feet apart, you're okay.
Yeah, sure.
So, this proclamation is about a topic which is a difficult one for the families that experience it. And I commend the two of you for trying to make more people aware about it. So, I have a proclamation here that says, whereas tragically approximately a million pregnancies yearly in the United States and in early pregnancy loss, stillbirth, or death of the newborn child. And whereas in 1998, President Reagan designated the entire month of October as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month to recognize the loss so many parents experienced across the United States and around the world. And whereas October 15th is observed as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day, it serves to promote greater awareness, remembrance, and support of the estimated one in four individuals and families whose lives are irrationally altered by the death of their children during pregnancy, at birth, and in infancy. And whereas the loss of a child stays with parents, friends, and family members forever. Parents that have lost a child have increased risks of poor health outcomes such as posthumatic stress disorder, depression, psychiatric hospitalizations, guilt, and heart attacks. And whereas, according to the Department of Public Health Statistics, Georgia's infant mortality rate has risen over the last few years while the national rate has flattened or declined. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize October as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month and encourage all residents to help support families affected by pregnancy and infant loss, honor and remember the babies that were lost too soon. This the 22nd day of September 2020.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here today. I'd be lying if I said we were excited about the need for a resolution to commemorate Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. It's a month that shouldn't exist, but sadly, it does. But taking a moment to reflect and remember means a lot to those who have lost a child. Anyone who's experienced such a loss knows there are not a lot of answers. My wife, Ruth, and I found that out three years ago when we lost our son, Thomas. Sadly, those who have encountered this tragedy know that death is just the beginning. Parents experience a range of problems after a child's death, and those problems follow them everywhere they go. They must face it every day. I recognize we're not going to solve the problem here today, but we can't expect to tackle an issue if we don't first recognize it as a problem. I hope that resolutions like this will go a long way to shining a light on this problem that plagues far too many people, both here in Cobb County locally and nationally. We can't speak for everyone who has lost a child, but we can say we appreciate your action to declare October as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. Let's hope it's a month we no longer have to commemorate sometime soon.
I am pleased and honored to introduce to you two of our newest Canines. One is our police canine and one is our fire dog. So, if I could have Fire Investigator Manus and his black lab, Vinnie, come up, and Officer Bartlett and Brave. So, first, a little bit of history about the handlers here. Fire Investigator Manus has been with the police and the fire for 17 years, right? And Officer Bartlett has been with Cobb PD since 2004. Somebody has treats. So, through the generosity of some corporate sponsors, the Atlanta Braves donated Brave. We call him Bravo. And State Farm donated Vinnie here. And I'm going to let the fire and PD tell y'all what they're trained to do and how well they do their job. Aren't they beautiful? He'll be two in October.
Yes, ma'am.
And he's a Dutch shepherd. And Vinnie is a beautiful shiny black lab.
You want to go first? Can I hold him?
Sure. You're going to have to hold on tight. This is Canine Brave. We got him back in January, February. Sole purpose for bomb detection. I had patrol dogs before. Canine Brave, he goes by the nickname Roddy, I mean by Bravo. He's able to detect up to 23 to 26 different bomb odors. And he might not, he might bite that. If you want a good picture, I'll give you the toy, and he'll look at you for the toy, but that's about it.
He's looking good right now. You got him?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Great. I thought I wasn't going to have to talk. Sorry. I apologize ahead of time, guys. I hate talking in front of people. This is Vinnie. He's about two and a half years old. He's a black lab. He's an accelerant detection canine. He was trained originally as a seeing eye dog and flunked out of that school because he didn't stop at intersections. He just kind of kept going. So, he's now trained to sniff anything with a petroleum distillate, which anything from kerosene, diesel, gasoline, any of the things that would start fires. So far, we've been on about fire scenes, and he's done a great job, but we're looking forward to finding more, so.
Thank you. Vinnie is very friendly, and he loves belly rubs. This one is very hyper. But he's beautiful. You're both beautiful. Okay, we need a picture, boys.
This will be fun.
We have a lot in between.
Be nice.
We're in the middle of a dog fight.
There we go. Very good. Thank you. Yay.
Thanks, y'all.
Tonight, I'm going to read a proclamation recognizing Georgia Highland College. Whereas recognizing the value of accessible higher education and increased economic growth across the Northwest Georgia region, Floyd Junior College opened its first location room in Georgia in the fall of 1970 with 19 faculty members teaching 545 students. And whereas the college attained and maintains accreditation from the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools, increased enrollment, expanded to additional sites in Rome, Cartisville, Dallas, Georgia, Marietta, and Douglasville, and graduates graduates hundreds of students each year. To best reflect these achievements and the high school and the school's regional impact, the name was changed to Georgia Highland Highlands College. And whereas Georgia Highlands College continues to grow and build on its mission of excellence in programs and career pathways while expanding course and degree offerings. This helps ensure students in our community have access to rapidly growing fields at a low cost that allows them to graduate with little or no debt. The school boasts the second highest enrollment among state colleges in Georgia with more than 300 full-time and part-time faculty teaching thousands of students across the region each year. And whereas this fall, the college is celebrating its 50th anniversary. Students, faculty, staff, alumni, retirees, and our community honor the past, present, and future of Georgia Highlands College. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize the contributions of Georgia Highlands College and celebrate its legacy of as an exceptional institution. The school's dedication to students, the value of their studies, and elimination of cost barriers in higher education are invaluable assets to our community. Signed by all the commissioners, this 22nd day of September 2020. Congratulations.
Thank you, Chairman Boyce. This is my friend and colleague, Ken Reeves, who is the dean for the Cobb campus. My name's Don Green. I'm the president at Georgia Highlands College. We are blessed and we are honored to be able to serve the citizens of Cobb County, and it is our intent to provide a stronger basis for economic development for our county by providing low-cost education, and we thank you very much for this proclamation.
Let's have a famous photo op.
All right, here we go. Three, two, one, and go. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Thank you. Appreciate you.
And now, if I could get representatives from Alpha, Delta, Kappa up here today. These young ladies wanted to do this proclamation in my office, and I said that's not good enough for them. They need to be out here so the whole public can see this incredible sorority, and we duly recognize them tonight. Whereas the vision, dedication, and actions of four women, the state of Missouri issued a charter incorporating Alpha, Delta, Kappa in 1947. This international honorary organization for women educators now has chapters in every state and around the globe. And whereas women in education constitute a large portion of our nation's workforce, lifelong learning unites Alpha, Delta, Kappa members in a fellowship focusing on professional excellence, leadership development, altruism, and world understanding. And whereas more than 29,000 members participate in personal and professional growth opportunities in combined efforts to enrich their schools, communities, and the teaching profession. And whereas some of the organization's goals include recognizing outstanding educators, building camaraderie among educators, establishing high standards in education, and promoting activities that enrich lives. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 2020 an International Alpha, Delta, Kappa Month in Cobb County. We thank our educators and our organization members for their altruistic efforts. Signed by all the commissioners, this 22nd day of September 2020. Congratulations, ladies.
I'm Wanda Patterson, and I am retired from 30 years as a teacher at Spray Bay High School. And I am chairman of Alpha, Delta, Kappa Month for our sorority, Alpha Pi, which is located in Cobb County. This is Pamela Gooch, who is our president. She's retired from 30 years in the classroom, most recently in Paulding County. We are an honorary organization of educators, both classroom teachers and administrators. And we include, even though she and I are both retired, at least 50% of our membership are actively teaching. And so, Chairman Boyce, it is with a great deal of appreciation that we thank you and the board for recognizing those teachers during this difficult time in the world of education.
Amen. Okay, thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, before we get into public comment, I just want to make an administrative announcement here. For those of you that may be here for the due cause hearing on Agenda Item Number 42 tonight, in order to allow for due process and provide sufficient time for the parties to prepare their cases, Cobb County has agreed to a continuance at the request of council. The hearing will be at the October 22nd Board of Commissioners meeting, which is the next meeting that the parties were available. Okay, with that, we'll now go into public comment.
Chairman, I believe it's the 27th. Was it just for clarification?
No, sorry, I had my tie on. So, I meant 27.
October 27. Commissioners, we have three people who signed up for public comment today. The first one's Dr. Williams.
Yeah, thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I'm extremely pleased to be here tonight. I've been away for a while, but I've been watching y'all virtually. Thank good, okay? My purpose tonight is to commend the board for what I consider to be an important second step, to make actionable the courageous resolution that all of you signed on to June 9th earlier this year. And when I say courageous, I absolutely mean that. In the thick of all that's going on in the nation, this board made a decision to step up and step out and to agree that it wanted to be a part of the work and the search for solutions that would help to resolve the enormous racial divide in our country. That's not easy. The commitment is deep, and the work is indeed hard. And as I've had an opportunity to read your resolution, and the words that are set out on this resolution, I am even more encouraged because you come forth with additional language that is clear, strong, and resolute, reflecting where this board is. About a year ago, I went to South Georgia to spend some time with what was the largest slave colony in Georgia, a town called La Grange, Georgia, and was absolutely uplifted to meet the residents there who had been working together for some time to continue to look into the adverse effects of slavery on people of color, including Native Americans, black folk, Jewish people, and others who were not white Anglo-Saxon. That group continues to exist, and it includes the mayor of La Grange, the college president of La Grange, chief of police of La Grange, elected officials of La Grange, community advocates of La Grange, and other citizens who, for years, have stayed the course and coming back north, quote unquote, from the very deep South Georgia. That continues to loom large in my own head and inspires me and encourages me to stay with it and look forward to an opportunity when my Board of Commissioners will also be a part of the work. So, thank you. I encourage you to continue to say clearly and loudly where you stand on matters of racism that still adversely affects communities, not only here in Cobb, across this country and across this world. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. The next public speaker is Pax Riddle.
I was one of the fortunate members of Dr. McMorris's drafting committee to create the proposed charter and bylaws for the Cobb County Council on Justice, Peace, and Reconciliation that we now refer to as the CJPR. After many weeks of meetings, drafts, and redrafts all across the summer, we're very excited about the proposed resolution now before you for approval. With the BOC's passage of the resolution against racism this past June that Dr. Ben spoke to, and now the proposed establishment of the CJPR, our county has once again shown that we prefer to be leaders in our state, not followers, and we wish to thank Dr. McMorris for her outstanding insight and leadership on this project. It's always a pleasure to work with her and her team. And finally, I'd like to introduce you to our drafting committee members, since we were kind of meeting in places where you couldn't see us. So, members who are present, could you please stand if I call your names? Dr. Ben Williams, Cobb Chapter, Southern Christian Leadership Conference; Sally Riddle, co-founder of Cobb Coalition for Public Safety; Jereen Bonner-Grimes, Cobb branch of the NAACP; Carol Massey, Cobb Neighborhood Safety Commission; Rich Pellegrino, Cobb Chapter SCLC; Reverend Dr. Samuel Dow, Pleasant Grove Baptist Church and past National Director of the NAACP Youth and College Division; and Consultant Ernest Davis; and Dr. Monica Willis-Brown of Brown Consulting and Educational Services. Thank you all for your hard work on this important project. And to the board, thank you for giving this proposal your earnest consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riddle. The next public speaker is Dan Larkin.
Thank you. I came to share an idea about improving our community. This is dedicated to the Cobb County Department of Public Safety. It is called Citizens for Community, a voluntary program whereby citizens can add resources to our already great county programs and services. The intent of this proposal is to encourage personal investment and participation in community, an opportunity to better our community from the grassroots level, an appeal to allow a personal investment in a county department that one feels moved to do so in. For example, a citizen who wanted to support the libraries could make a contribution using an already existing county form. The contributions would be open to all county residents, both property owners and renters, and even visitors. Volunteering time is also a way to help. I would be willing to teach technical skills. Others could volunteer to teach in their respective professions. Programs also in practical skills Programs also in practical skills such as homeownership and maintenance, basic finance, nutrition, and exercise. By most accounts, the county runs a tight ship as far as efficiency. I am proposing a way to add a voluntary tip, a tip that pays dividends in community. These donations would not be part of the departmental budgets, so would not become a dependent source of income. Each department chair could use the resources to better their departments. Imagine the improvements we could enjoy in our county by offering the citizenry an opportunity to better their quality of life. Something special happens in people when you believe in them. It pays forward in trust and respect, belief that the citizenry would rise to the occasion, and belief that our leaders would be good stewards of their resources. Benevolence is not handed down by edict or up by ballot. It is freely given by both sides. In fact, there are no sides, as we are all both citizens and leaders. I can see Cobb County getting national attention by inviting the citizenry to invest in their community. I would like to know who would like to advance this idea or a similar one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larkin. Chairman, that concludes those that have signed up for public speaking this evening.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let me go ahead and make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as revised. Have a second, then we'll scroll it down and then we'll have discussion, okay?
I ask that we pull Item Number 5 for discussion.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion on the floor to, and pull it for discussion in what sense? Move it to regular?
Yeah, any one commissioner can pull it for discussion.
Okay, well, we're going to discuss it anyhow as part of, as part of the, as part of the motion.
Usually for consent, it's, it doesn't facilitate discussion of an agenda item, which is.
Okay, so we'll, we'll move it to, we'll move it to regular, okay? Does that work for you?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, so there's the consent agenda as revised, and we have a second, and we're going to be pulling Number 5 for discussion as part of the regular agenda, and we'll discuss that immediately after we vote on consent. So we have a motion, we have a second, and a discussion on consent. Seeing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of the consent agenda revised, please raise your hand. Pass is five to zero. All right, so now let's move to Item Number, let's move to approve or discuss a resolution creating the Cobb County Council for Justice, Peace, and Resolution. I make a motion that we approve a resolution creating the Cobb County Council for Justice, Peace, and Resolution. Have a second, all right. Now we have discussion. Who'd like to start?
Thank you.
Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you. I ask that we pull this matter for discussion as there had been a lot of questions posed by the board when this was presented to us via email by our county manager, not all of which I understand, and how they've been addressed and how we've gotten here today is, is one particular matter. But I'd like to talk about maybe a broader matter in the context of how this has been presented to me and why I have some questions and even some hesitance in supporting this in this forum today. Around the same time that this was brought forward was the same time that a number of nonprofit organizations were working together to address housing and evictions in the county. They came together because we recognized that there were a number of residents who were not being contemplated in the programs that the county had when it came to addressing As a leader of District 4, where we do have a number of residents that are of low to moderate income, it was particularly of concern to me, not only because I see issues that plague members burdened by challenges with housing prior to COVID, but knowing the struggles that many women of color, low, lower-income families, and even professional women go through in trying to just keep everything afloat. It was very important to me to see that addressed. It was very disheartening to see how that matter was handled by this board. We had some members of the district who were here and saw the way that that was handled and some who saw it by video, who felt that the actions of this board certainly were not consistent with the ideals that are proposed in this resolution. It was very difficult to digest this with any seriousness because it didn't seem to reflect the sincere interest of the board and their recognition that their behavior sometimes subverts the goals of which they espouse when it comes to reaching out to community, connecting with community, serving the community, caring for the community. And so when I read language in our resolution that talks about bringing together a group that fosters collaboration amongst our stakeholders and organizations, just a meeting or two ago, this board chose not to foster that collaboration. When organizations came together to serve the most vulnerable in this community, they actually criticized it and said, "Collaborate. Let there be just one." And they chose not to go with an organization in Cobb, but chose to go outside. So for me, to see the lack of value placed on those that sit up here and those that serve out in the, in the community was the context of which I received this proposal. But this is not the only context of which I have that makes me wonder about the sincerity that this board has to these values and why we would make it the responsibility of a future board to enact something that I have not seen evidence of, of this current board in upholding. As a person of color, leading, leading a district of great diversity, you want to believe in the hope of our leaders to be sensitive to the needs and concerns of our community. When you see the things that have happened over the past six months nationally, it has come to a great shock and surprise that people have taken it to the streets, have gone out and organized, have marched protested, some even have taken on some of the character that we wish would, would not have frustrated that effort by some people even breaking the law. It came to a surprise to many people that that's how they felt because they have espoused these things and said that they've cared about our community and cared about all people of race. But it's one thing to say it, and it's another thing to live it, and it's another thing to do it. And you get tired over, you get tired sometimes. I get tired, really, of just playing along. I thought very long and hard about what it would mean to support this and to support my board in putting this forward because this, because I want to be a person that helps to move people forward in a way that is positive. But I at least believe that if we put forward in something in a way that is positive and something that is this transformative, one, you don't rush it. I had, and why do I say rush? I have a monthly community meeting with a, with a group of stakeholders in the district every fourth Tuesday, and they asked me about this resolution. They had questions and concerns about it, but it came forward to the public when this agenda item was published. It wasn't put in a work session for the community to even see us discuss. And if this is really serious and transformative for the board, why do you put it on consent? And why do you not have this already set in the agenda for this to be discussed openly? A consent agenda is where you tuck items of which either there are no, there is an sense, an overall sense of agreement about how this moves forward. And even for matters of significance to this county, we've chosen to always move matters such as BLOSS when it comes to Braves, other things that we want the public to know about. We put it on a regular agenda for your consumption so you can see us deliberate things of significance to you, but that is not where this item was placed tonight. When I listened to Dr. Williams speak, I had to write down a point because it struck me to say that this resolution reflects where this board is was something that I heard him say. I'm not convinced of that. And this board will not be the board that is given the task of implementing this because it was chosen because of all the layers of questions that the board had to not put this forward with bylaws or other things to construct this board. It was put forward as a shell, except one thing that has me concerned is how if it's a shell and you're stating your commitment to this, then why does this board task upon it to say, "Next board, you implement this, but let me tell you who's to serve on the body to implement it." I don't think that that really gives that next board the level of care that they should bring to this matter to construct this in a way that they know will be successful by giving them the autonomy to appoint what groups are on this board. When you look at the groups that are on this board, it pulls from the same organizations that continue to have dialogue on these matters, but if we are an inclusive board, we've got to consider people outside of this space. Today, three of the board members were at Life University where they created a scholarship in John Lewis's name. Life University has a social justice foundation and curricula that follows it, but they typically are not integrated in these matters, and they are not included, included here. I was contacted by a social, by a task force within Cobb County just yesterday to ask if I can recommend them for a social justice grant because that's an issue that's near and dear to their heart. They are not included here on this proposal. So I have a question about us doing something to unite, to bring peace and to reconcile a community at large without giving the community at large an ability to weigh in and to be considered in the construct of this, other than each board appointee having one member to appoint. There are 15 members on this board that's going to be created. Each commissioner has one member to appoint. 10 of the other, or at least five of the other and possibly other members, they are all organizational or institutional appointments. So to me, it seems as if there could be some balance as far as who the appointees are because in the reiteration of the organization that we're reviving, the Community Relations Council, this was really a citizen-centric initiative, and now it seems like it's more institutional in character. I question the timing of this, and clearly I'm not the only one because when I was on my call with some members of the community today, they questioned it, but then we got an email today that said, and I'll state what it stated, that your proposed council, they don't necessarily appear to, it to be improvement, but with its timing of it being near an election, they said it seems like election pandering. For us to really rush this at this time without really giving this thought and wait for the public to consider, that's how I feel. And I know I feel that way because what struck me when I started to have sincere questions about this, I thought about, what's the detriment to me if I say no right before an election? What's the detriment to me if I say, "Hold this and give it some additional thought"? Because it's very easy in the days of Twitter and 120 or 240 characters to just paint somebody broadly for news. And I was concerned about being painted that way because it's right before an election. But I know in my heart that I support this in spirit. It's hard to support it in the context of which I'm sharing. One final thing, this board is to, is supporting a resolution of justice, peace, and reconciliation, which should speak to the policy interests of our board. But yet this board is not, it seems to be constructed in a way, and I kept talking to the county manager about, is this a board, is this, what's the structure with the reporting? Because the board seems to have a reporting structure to the county manager. It's very difficult for me to know, is this a policy interest of our board or is this a, is this an advisory board to our county manager as far as moving this forward? It's very difficult to see how the way this is constructed, that this is set up to really speak to the policy interests of, of our board and then for it to be structured in that manner. And I feel like this board, if, if this truly is about justice, peace, reconciliation, we should come, we should all be able to come forward boldly. And I learned this the hard way with the last resolution that we had on race. I was so optimistic about how this board was going to come together and support it, and members of the community kept asking me, "Commissioner Cupid, why are you pushing this? If they don't believe it, don't do it." And I'm sure they felt pressure about how they would look if they didn't support it. So I'm just saying today, there need not be that pressure because I think the public and I- Because I think the public, and I know I certainly am looking for sincerity when it comes to addressing issues as sensitive as the ones that are being addressed by this board. We're not looking for things to just be put forward in a way that doesn't feel as if it's sincere and never seems to really play itself out on how people treat and regard our community and each other. As something that's very difficult for me to support. So I share that. I will stop speaking. I think it was, it was very important for me to share my perspective on this. Because even as I share this, I'm still torn about how do I put, how do I support this interest with how it's being supported today? How do I not, how do I show support from the board and wanting to be committed to such things? But how do I also respect the future board and their task in being responsible for implementing these things? So that's my perspective on this.
Thanks, Commissioner Cupid. Mr. Gamble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I share many of Commissioner Cupid's comments that she just said. But in a time where government seems to be addressing only the loudest voice in the room, are we not forgetting the role of government, which is to protect the basic human rights, which include life, liberty, and the right to possess property? Yes, each person deserves to enjoy these rights and should not fear any of these rights being removed based on someone else's perception. However, this resolution is not presented to help Cobb County government internally. It seems to be focused on Cobb County government establishing a group who will decide what the values and morals should be for those within Cobb County. Truth does not belong to the one who shouts the loudest, yet this board is considering a quasi-shadow government in the name of diversity. I also question the process as to which this council is being established. There have been no public notices or public hearings prior to this resolution, yet if approved tonight by the board, this group has a direct influence on policy and practices in the future. While I understand the concept, I am not able to support this agenda item. It is one you don't feel desperate to prove a point, that knowledge unfolds and reason prevails.
Thanks, Mr. Gamble. Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you, sir. Initially, I too had some reservations about some of the language or the way it was written. After discussing with the county manager on many occasions, county attorney's office, and our other departments, public safety, we made, we, well, first of all, we were all given the complete package with bylaws, charter, and resolution from Dr. McMorris weeks ago. And I responded with some suggestions and comments. I was told I was the only one that had so far, and then others had, came on board later, I guess. But it has been out there. And, and, you know, when, when we did the racism, the resolution for racism in June, Commissioner Gamble and I had some suggestions for that as well. And we ended up compromising on what we thought would, you know, be a good resolution because our idea of what to include was, was not acceptable. So, but we wanted to show that we were united against racism. I mean, who isn't? If they're not, they have no place here as far as, in Cobb County, as far as I'm concerned. But tonight, we're, this has been, this was actually discussed when we did the resolution on racism as resurrecting the old council, Community Relations Council that was disbanded. And, and that, and in a different scope and concept, of course, but building upon that old organization that is now no longer. So this was actually talked about and had been worked on through the summer, as the comments you heard tonight from some of the core group members that were working on this. And tonight, we're, we're looking at the resolution. Yes, I agree that the bylaws and the charter, we will have at least a couple of new board members in January, and they should have input and a say. But to say that we haven't, you know, seen this or given input on this for the last several weeks, we have. And, you know, it's up to us to ask the questions and sit down and talk with legal and the county manager and the other departments to get their input and see where we go from here. So this, this has been discussed amongst us, and it's been in the paper and everywhere else. So I don't, I don't see the issue of why we're, why we would hold it. But so I'm, I would support the resolution and the concept tonight.
Okay. Ms. Schott, you have comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't going to say much, but I don't appreciate other commissioners trying to tell the public what I'm thinking or how I feel. I do not feel pressured. Some of the most enlightening conversations that I have had have been with our county manager. And sometimes they are about me telling her about what it's like to be white and her telling me about what it's like to be black. And they are some of the most enlightening conversations that I've had. Additionally, my, the trainer I have at the gym is a young black woman who we have had wonderful conversations. And I have been here for all three attempts at creating a council or a community forum to open the dialogue between the races, the religions, the cultures of this county. I have sat here through many times of Dr. Williams coming up and telling us what we don't do right. And it is rewarding and refreshing to finally see that he does think we do something right, and I appreciate that, Dr. Williams. And I always appreciate your comments because they're always insightful and very well thought out and well said. We can't just sit back as Rome burns. We don't need our community to be burning. We need our, our community to understand each other and to get along. Is this perfect? No. I would have preferred to have the bylaws and everything done by this board. My job did not stop in January when I decided to retire. I am the commissioner for District Two until December 31st, 2020, at 11:59. And I can tell you how many minutes and seconds that is, but I am the commissioner. And it is my responsibility as duly elected by the citizens to do my job until that last minute. And I am not about to abdicate that, and I am not about to be accused of abdicating it by giving a future board, who will be the ones that have to interact and work with our county manager and this community board that we are creating. So I'm the one that asked to have the bylaws voted on by the board. And I'm also the one that said that I was fine with having them wait until next year. But it is wrong by anyone on this board to accuse this board of trying to underhand or undercut or work around any other member of this board. We don't always get our way. We don't always get everything that we want in an agenda item or a resolution or any of the other things that this board passes. If it was always 5-0, why would we have meetings? We would just put the agenda out and say, this is what we're going to do. But that's not what we do. To me, it is more healthy when there is disagreement among the board because it opens discussion and dialogue among the members, not always the way some members would like it to be, but it allows things to change. The resolution on racism changed as a result of comments from the board. So I fully support this resolution. I thank those members of the committee that spent their summer through all the difficult times that we went through this summer to come up with this. And so I will be voting yes, Mr. Chairman.
So with that, I'm going to call a question.
Yes, additional?
No, ma'am, I'm sorry. I think we've had full discussion on this. We have other issues and time we have to move on to. So with that, I'm going to call a question. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Commissioner, pass the motion, pass the agenda passes with Commissioner Cupid and Gamble in opposition. Okay, so let's go on to Regler. And DOT is the first one.
DOT has 11 items to present for board consideration tonight. Recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a revised reimbursable contract for acquisition of Rightofway with the Georgia Department of Transportation for acres, mill, road, managed lanes access, State PI number 0015051. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents to include necessary quick claim deeds to GDOT for Rightofway certification.
Ms. Schott.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass this 5 to 0.
Recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one to project number X 2306, task order number two to the 2016 master task order contract with AECOM Technical Services, a no-cost time extension through March 30th, 2021 for engineering design of intersection improvements on Factory Shoals Road at Riverside Parkway.
Ms. Cupid.
So moved.
You have a second. Discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass this 5 to 0.
Recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one to the contract with Carlson Construction Services in an amount not to exceed $187,650 for advanced transportation management systems, intelligent transportation system communications, phases 1C, 2, and 3A.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass this 5 to 0.
Thank you. Recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Exeller Construction LLC as savings to the project in the amount of $107,0091.58 for operational improvements on Factory Shoals Road, Harmony, Leland, and Clay Elementary Schools.
Ms. Cupid.
So moved.
You have a second. Discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass this 5 to 0.
Thank you. Recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number three final to the contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC as savings to the project in the amount of $2,680.26 for 2019 Countywide Americans with Disabilities Act compliant sidewalks.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Second.
You have a second. Discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass this 5 to 0.
Thank you. Recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Georgia Outdoors Stewardship Program grant application to the Georgia Department of Natural Resources to assist with funding, engineering, construction of Chattahoochee River Trail pedestrian improvements, phase one. Designate Erica Parish, Department of Transportation Agency Director, as the authorized representative for all matters associated with this grant application, and authorize the chairman or his designee to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Cupid.
So moved.
Second.
You have a second. Discussion. All in support, raise your hand. Pass, all opposed? So it passes 41. Commissioner Gamble in opposition.
Thank you. Recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number two final to the contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC as savings to the project in the amount of $1,443.51 for 2019 Countywide Americans with Disabilities Act compliant sidewalks, districts three and four.
Ms. Burrow.
Motion to approve.
You have a second. Discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass this 5 to 0.
Recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number two final to resurfacing contract 2019-2 Local Roads South with Bartow Paving Company Incorporated, a savings to the project in the amount of $370,125.8 for resurfacing of county maintained streets.
Ms. Cupid.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass this 5 to 0.
Thank you. Recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number two final to resurfacing contract 2019-3 Local Roads North with CW Matthews Contracting Company Incorporated, an increase to the project in the amount not to exceed $69,689.55 for resurfacing of county maintained streets.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
You have a second. Discussion. All in support, please raise your hand. Pass this 5 to 0.
Thank you. Recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Pollitt Tucker Enterprises Incorporated, DBA Tucker Grading and Hauling, a savings of $4,031.25 for pedestrian improvements on Woodlawn Drive, Dickerson Middle School.
Ms. Schott.
So moved.
I'll second. You have a second. Discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass this 5 to 0.
Thank you. Recommend the Board of Commissioners ratify previous action by the county manager authorizing emergency repairs on Powers Ferry Road at Interstate North Parkway. Approve a contract with which Thompson Enterprises Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $229,802.50 for said drainage system repairs.
Ms. Schott. I'll second it. You have a discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass this 5 to 0. Thank you. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
And now Support Services.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, and County Manager. Our item this evening is a joint item with Finance and Human Resources to request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract amendment with CGI Technologies and Solutions, Inc., for $1,751,658.61 to upgrade the CGI Advantage Finance and HR System. Authorize the purchasing director to procure licensing, hardware, and software required for the upgrade in the amount of $618,575.95, and authorize a 10% contingency fund of $237,023.46. This will bring the total project cost to an amount not to exceed $2,607,258.2. This project is an eligible project under the 2016 SPOSS Support Services Technology Improvements Program, X0020. We ask the Board of Commissioners authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Ms. Schott.
So moved.
You have a second. Discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass this 5 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who have a public comment, Mr. Rowling?
The Chairman.
Okay, so I'll turn the floor over to Commissioner Gamble for appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion to approve the reappointment of Scott Tucker to the Neighborhood Safety Commission.
You have a second. Discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass this 5 to 0.
Do you want me to go ahead with number four?
You have number, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve the reappointment of Jeff Wood to the Neighborhood Safety Commission.
You have a second and discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass this 5 to 0. And, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointments to the Hospital Authority of Cobb County to include the appointment of Carmen Hughes to post two, Donnie Newsom to post five, for a term to expire on August 7th, 2026. You have a second. Any discussion? Please, all in favor, please raise your hand. Pass this 5 to 0. Start with Commissioner Burrow. You're first tonight.
Okay. I'm going to be long tonight, Commissioner. There's a lot going on in Cobb County.
You want us to take a recess first?
More dogs. We love our seniors in Cobb, and the Senior Wellness Center is hosting a dog adoption event for seniors. You have to be 55 and older. And here's some of the cute little dogs we have up for adoption. $20, and the trailer will be at the Senior Wellness Center on Powder Springs Street. They're all vaccinated, spayed or neutered, microchipped, and ready to go home with you the same day. So bring your $20 and your ID and come out from Monday, September 28th, from 10 to noon. It's coming Monday. And then from our veterans adoptions. And then from our veterans' adoptions, we had two cats this week. This is Mr. Gilbert Barker, and he served in the Navy for four years. Thank you for your service and for adopting this adorable two-month-old kitten. And this is Mr. Charles Fentalza. He's also U.S. Navy for 30 years. Thank you for your service for adopting Chipmunk, the four-year-old black-and-white kitten. We had a run on cats, I guess. Most of y'all are familiar, normally we do a proclamation for Diaper Day. This was started, I think, 10 years ago, 10 or 12 years ago, from Barbara Hickey, and this is a great program that she started to help underprivileged mothers and parents to get diapers. And there are several nonprofit organizations that receive the diapers from this program. So it's virtual this year, so you can go online and donate. You can call Jennifer Lynch at 678-2966-501 to arrange for a pickup or be a sponsor, and all the information is on the flyer. You can just go to cobbdiaperday.com. Okay, who knows about chimney swifts? Any bird watchers on the board? Okay, the town center CID alliance contracted with the Audubon Society and had an artist, Christina Ward, paint the mural on the chimney swift tower. And this is at the Noonday Creek Trail. It's a 12-foot-tall chimney swift tower, and it's really pretty. And so if you're a bird watcher, you can go and watch the birds be attracted to this beautiful tower. And thank you to the Town Center Alliance. Okay, a lot of folks have been asking, when are we going to do our Household Hazardous Waste? And Keep Cobb Beautiful has October 31st, Halloween, from 9:00 to 12:00, at 2435 East West Connector in Austell. And there's some flyers in the back, and there's some list of the items that are accepted and not accepted. And thank you to all our sponsors at the bottom. The plane that you see in the drawing here is finally ready to be installed at Aviation Park. This was another Town Center CID and Alliance project for Aviation Park, which is really a beautiful park in District 3 in the Town Center area, near the airport. But to install the plane takes some big cranes and equipment. So it will be closed, Aviation Park will be closed this Sunday and October 4th, from 7:00 to 5:00, and then just temporarily those two Sundays to get the plane installed. So I can't wait to see it final. Also, October 5th is Public Safety Week, Public Safety Appreciation Week, where we want to show our appreciation for all of our public safety and law enforcement, and you saw some of them well represented here tonight with our canines and their handlers. So we can never thank our public safety enough for all they do, day in and day out, to protect us. So please show your appreciation and thank them the week of October 5th through the 9th. Also, do I have the census? I didn't have the census. As Commissioner Cupid mentioned earlier, today we attended a luncheon in honor of the late Congressman John Lewis for a scholarship that Life University has named for him. And I don't have to tell you what Congressman Lewis stood for and what a great inspiration in the civil rights movement and that he was to all. And this is his son, John Miles Lewis, with the scholarship recognition at the luncheon today. It was a great honor to meet him as well. So thank you to Life College, Life University, excuse me, for all your support and scholarship. And time is running out for the census. September 30th is the last day to respond, so go to 2020census.gov. I'm proud to say that through the efforts of Jason Gaines and the team at Community Development, we have gone over our goal from 2010. I think we're about 70% or 75%. And although Georgia is not as a state over their goal. So we really need to get everybody that accounted for, so please go to 2020census.gov if you haven't signed up already, and you have until September 30th. And please stay updated with my newsletter, cobbcounty.org/burrow, all of our newsletters, and keep abreast of what's going on in Cobb County.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So good news for our Cobb seniors. Our senior services will be reopening the senior centers on Monday, October 5th, with limited hours and programs. Everyone must be registered in advance before coming to a center. Temperature screenings will be conducted at the door, and the rooms will be set up to allow social distancing. While there, there will be some in-person activities. Cobb Senior Services will continue to offer virtual programs on their Facebook and online links as well. The North Cobb Senior Center will open on Monday, November 5th, after the elections, and the Tim D. Lee Senior Center is closed for renovations until further notices. Cobb Senior Services has given much thought and care in preparing for seniors to return and are eagerly looking forward to seeing you. For full details and protocols can be found at www.cobbseniors.org, or you can call 770-528-5355. Nominate a local hero. All Roof Solutions, once again, would like to give back to one of many deserving local heroes by promoting him or her with a free roof on Veterans Day. To nominate a deserving veteran and/or first responder, please provide a video or photo submission on behalf of your nominee with a brief explanation as to why you are choosing this local hero for the free roof giveaway. All Roof Solutions, Inc., and All Restoration Solutions, LLC, will select the grand prize winner, which will be announced on November 11th, 2020. The contest is open through October 20th, or I'm sorry, October 1st, so be sure to get your nomination in. And to enter, you can visit allroofsolutions.com/2020giveaway. Cobb Parks made it into our state magazine. To officially end summer, we had two of our parks employees write articles for our official publication of the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association magazine. Certified Arborist and Cobb Parks Natural Resource Manager Charlie A. Monroe and Maple House Art Center Coordinator Libby Geiselmeier are in our top photo, or I'm sorry. Top photo is John Purcell of our Cobb Parks Natural Resources Coordinator. He was providing training on chainsaw parts and safety. The bottom one is Michael Haroldston. He's a certified arborist of Cobb Parks Natural Resources Team Member, and he demonstrates how to properly fell a tree. In our second photo, and you have to be certified to use a chainsaw in Cobb County, in case anybody knew that. In the top-right photo, one of the art box mystery students opening her first package that they're offering, and also another art box mastery student solving his first clue. And then bottom, we are working on a craft, and our art box mysteries are solved in the last photo. To read the full articles, please visit Georgia Recreation and Parks Association at And again, it's getting to be the fall time of year, and I'd like you to join me for some fall fun at Gamble's Great Pumpkin Day, presented by the Still Family Farm, to support Safe Path Children's Advocacy Center. Activities include the roly-poly hayrides, pumpkins, zinnia flower maze, and the best apple cider in West Cobb. Also, we will have animal controls, adopt a pet man, touch a fire truck, meet and greet with our Cobb County Police, and much more. There will be $2 off admission with a donation of disinfectant wipes or spray, mask and facial tissues, or paper towels. All items will be donated to Safe Path. The Still Family Farm entrance is at 5682 Macklin Road, Powder Springs. And for more information about the event, please visit stillfamilyfarm.com. And lastly, thank you to Ross Cabot and our communications crew last night. Marjorie Stagmeyer from Star C and Ernest Davis from Home Free USA shared information on Monday's live streaming telecast to help keep our Cobb residents negatively impacted by COVID-19 in their homes or apartments. Up to $4,800 in grants are available to help with mortgage or rent assistance. If you missed the live event, you can watch a replay on our YouTube and Facebook page. You can also submit your questions to cares@cobbcommunications.org. Thank you.
Commissioner. Commissioner Cupid?
And you made Box 5 news, too?
Yes, thank you. I don't know what protocol is. There was something I wanted to be added to, the clerk's notes for prior agenda item that the chairman cut off my ability to be able to address that, so I don't know if in asking the county, I don't know what protocol is if you're able to add something to the record.
You can. All I was doing was, once the question's called, you have to vote on it. You're allowed to add minutes, comments to the county clerks at any time during the meeting, before a recess.
When I was speaking, a question wasn't called.
I had called a question, madam. So you're allowed to make comments to the county clerk.
I'm just asking the county attorney if it's okay to add a comment to the record.
I mean, you can add any written comments particularly regarding something you're going to say, but be able to submit that today at this time, so.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. You know, again, when we're talking about something that addresses a holistic measure, it's very difficult when you aren't able to contribute in communication about it, and you see conversation cut off. But I would like to add to the record that my first communication that I received about the reiteration of this was August 26th, and I have that in my email. And that's all I want to share about it because it's very difficult, again, to be told you were given all summer to discuss this when you received your first communication August 26th. And again, if this full board is to fully contemplate items of significance, and if this was being contemplated all summer, I assure you, all of us were not included in Sometimes you have to be on this board for a very long time to feel like you're not in a twilight zone, because you get to see one thing stated, and then, you know, it could be a year or a few years done down the road, and something else will be stated. And our prior chair was not re-elected during his term. We had significant issues before this board to be contemplated, and he chose not to address those, and was commended by the same board member on this board, saying that he is to continue serving and making decisions of significance to bind a future board, when I know he would directly communicate to that chair over and over again about how he commended him and not making decisions to bind the next board. It is very difficult to, again, try to understand how you play and how you do get a chance to play fairly, when it does seem like the line moves and how people do get to participate in matters, which, again, gets to the whole issue at hand about how we do things as a board. And sometimes we think it's the what, but sometimes it's not just the what, it's the how, it's how we do things that's just as important. Getting to my comments for, getting from my announcements to today. With zoning, we continue to have our virtual community zoning meetings every fourth Wednesday at 6:00 PM. We will have our next meeting tomorrow evening, and encourage you to join, and you need to register via the newsletter, and you will get a link to join that meeting. For the next slide, please. Saturday, September 26th, Surfamilia will have a pop-up COVID testing event at their location in Acworth at 209 Northridge Drive. We encourage participants to register online, and information is listed here on the screen. You can also visit Cobb Douglas Public Health to get a link to do that. And testing is available for free for the first 100 participants. Next slide, please. Our Department of Transportation will have a building bridges event on Thursday, October 8th, to connect small businesses with prime contractors, and I'm so happy to see this continued. I know we had a similar event with purchasing a few years ago out of District 4. Registration is required to attend this event, even though it will be held virtually. Please visit cobbdot.org for additional information. Next slide. I would like to thank this board and our staff for making this event possible. About two to three years ago, we had a number of residents come before the board, expressing concern about a community center that was located in their neighborhood, that was going to be used for a purpose that they felt would actually make their community vulnerable. And with a lot of work in communicating with elected officials in the city of Smyrna, and with our elected officials on this board, with members of our CDBG office, working with a nonprofit, and others, the community building ended up being repurposed. And I know this would not have happened were it not for the engagement and the advocacy of the residents that live in the Rose Garden community in Smyrna. On Thursday, September 14th, we celebrated a ribbon cutting, which was supposed to happen in March, until the COVID pandemic became more acute. But we finally had a ribbon cutting, and it was a beautiful event. We had members of the public, even Public Safety was there, from the precinct that serves this community, and it was just a great time to fellowship and to be proud of the efforts that the residents had, and really taking some ownership of a community facility, which is uniquely situated. It is in the heart of a residential community, where a lot of public facilities are on the main roadway. So I want to thank Communications for coming out and helping. So, I want to thank Communications for coming out and helping to capture that event and also Public Services for organizing the ribbon cutting. Next slide, please. Today is actually National Voter Registration Day. It is recognized every fourth Tuesday of September. And it is a day to encourage people to get out and vote, or excuse me, to register to vote so that they can get out and vote because every year, millions of people that are registered find themselves unable to vote because they've missed a deadline. To actually update their, it could be to update their files or some people think they're registered in an area to vote and they find out that they aren't. So, today's just a day to make people aware, check your information. You can find it on the Secretary of State website to make sure that you're registered to vote in the county where you actually live. And you can also register to vote online. Typically, people had to print out applications and submit it to register to vote, but you can actually vote online. And if you visit our Secretary of State's website for the state of Georgia, you'll see a link to do that. So, we are moving into the digital age when it comes to elections. Next slide. Those conclude my comments for this evening.
Commissioner Kupin. Mr. Chairman, Brad, before we show the slides, sometimes I think I need to change his name tag to Paul Harvey for the rest of the story. My understanding in talking to county manager, what happened all summer was that the committee met to talk about it so that there was something to present to the board. There was never any comment or any suggestion that this board or anybody else was working on it over the summer. The county manager worked very closely with that committee, excuse me, worked very close with that committee and like I said earlier, should be commended for that. The other thing is, there's a big difference between committing a future board to spending money, which was the situation with former Chairman Lee and the Braves. With all the things that were coming forward, the things that Chairman Lee did not act upon would have committed the board to money. This has nothing to do with money. This has to do with building a community of love, not hate. So, there's a big difference. Now, speaking of a community, before we get to the slide now, Brad, I want to commend the police department. We had a very difficult situation this morning. An active shooter situation is always difficult to address and no one was hurt. It was a peaceful resolution of the situation. So, I think the police need to be commended for a tremendous job in keeping the community safe and getting out of a difficult situation. Now, the next, well, we have to include fire because otherwise Director Kreider would be upset. So, we got some pictures and a letter from Donna Lachance, who is watching, so hello, Donna. She was hiking at Gold Branch off Lower Roswell Road and fell and broke her leg. And when you see the map as to where she fell, she's down at the bottom of the screen There was no way to get her out without using our water rescue team along with Roswell. So, they had to, and this is the letter how she described, so basically, our fire rescue folks went into Gold Branch, stabilized her, and then they brought the boat rescue down and then took her up river and took her out at the Azalea River Park in Roswell. So, want to acknowledge and commend fire rescue for their coordinated efforts with the city of Roswell and I know that Donna was very pleased. The next slide, and I know you guys don't like when I do this, but I'm going to do it anyway. Next slide's going to tell you who did it. So, we have Engine 21, Engineer Jay Haygood, Firefighter 2 Donald Bell, Firefighter 1 Christopher Poole, and Firefighter 1 Jerry Boyd. From Truck 21, Lieutenant Richard Keenan, Engineer William Watkins, and Firefighter Number 1 Gary Haley. Battalion 3 Battalion Chief Josh Taylor, Firefighter Number 2 Mike Beard. Squad 4 and Boat 4, Lieutenant Ryan Fleeman, Engineer Scott Grand, Firefighter 2 Mark Difley, Firefighter 2 Casey Moats, and Firefighter 2 Dan Colburn. So, thank you for a job well done. And you've heard a lot about voting. Where to vote? Go to cobelections.org. Advance voting for the November 3rd, 2020 election. Need to go vote so that you get my replacement here. General election begins on October 12th, 2020. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner. Brad, you can go ahead and pull that slide on the Census. Commissioner Burrow already addressed it, okay? I'd like to just talk about something that's continued out there. I emphasize on a daily basis that we can't get complacent about the virus. It's still part of us. But the good news is, is we finally found a way with our education campaign, working with the medical providers in Cobb County, the healthcare providers, nonprofits, the CID's, a breadth of agencies in the county to educate the public of the importance of the three W's. Wear a mask, wash your hands, and watch your distance. And I'm really pleased to announce that today, we finally got down below the 5% positivity rate and we're well on our way to getting it down to the goal of 100 cases per 100,000. We're about 151 today, which is below the 200 mark that I think that the school system has been looking at to get the kids back in school. And I know that in about 10 days, the parents of 117,000 Cobb County school students and 3,000 Marietta school students are going to be probably the happiest parents on the face of the earth when their kids get back to school. And I have to say this, this has been perhaps, we have our issues here in the board, but the school, the two superintendents and the school boards had some really tough calls to make. And my, these are not easy choices because they involved a lot of kids and parents and the impact of leaving kids at home. But I think that we've come to understand the importance of having children back in school, if nothing else, that they do better there, but we've done our best to keep them safe, but it's time for them to go back. And the good news is, the community has worked to get them back in school with these numbers. So, my hat's off to everybody here in Cobb County and also outside to get these numbers down to where they need to be. On Saturday, I was very fortunate to be with, down at the Word of Faith, and the reason I want to emphasize this picture is in the center is Congressman David Scott. This man has done an extraordinary amount of good things for Cobb County. Why is that? Because he's the one that has ensured that this county continually receives community service, community development block grants and service block grants. Why is that important? Because these are the block grants that get to what I call in our faith walk, the least on the lost, the homeless, the food insecurity programs. And Congressman Scott has done an incredible job of getting not only this, these, about a $2 million block grant every year, remember, this is just for this, I mean, $20 million to Cobb County every year. Just think, that's just one county gets $20 million. But during this pandemic, he has found a way to squeeze another three, additional $3 million above and beyond what was given initially for $2 million for block grants for the CARES funding. And seen with him is Dr. Memark on his left, who is another public servant who's done an extraordinary amount of work to provide information about the importance of the three W's and what we can do to get through this time. And then the Wellstar Healthcare Team and to the left of Dr. Memark, if they don't recognize him, that's Dr. Hines. And why is he in so important? Because he's the one that's been leading the Wellstar team in the diversity program to get out among the population in the county that's most affected by the virus and most endangered by it. So, my hat's off to everyone in this picture, what they've done. And they're just a very small segment of all the volunteers and professionals who have worked so hard over the last six months to get us to where we are today. And, you know, our model in Cobb County is expect the best and I don't care where you come from in this county, this is a good news story because we get the best out of these kind of people and we're the beneficiaries of that. So, I'd like to end on that good note tonight that we are, we're headed in the right direction, but we cannot get complacent. We must still continue to practice three W's. And I know that as long as we ask you to partner with us and engage us in an objective that's reasonable to all and has an outcome that will all benefit from it, that we will all in the end continue to live in a place where we can all safely work, play, and pursue our dreams. So, that, good night and we're adjourned.